Our location at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. We have called this meeting to order. I'd ask that you please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge to the U.S. and to the Texas flag. Would you pray with me? Father, dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings of this life. We thank you for watching over our county. Father, we, as we deal with the COVID, we ask that you be with those individuals who have been infected, give them quick recovery. For those that may have lost loved ones, dear God, we ask that you be with them, give them peace and comfort and joy in the memories of their loved ones. Father, we would ask that you watch over this Commissioners' Court and all of the leadership in this Grimes County. Help to give us wisdom, good judgment, as the decisions that we make affect so many people on a day-to-day basis. We ask, Father, that you be with our first responders as they combat the day-to-day evils that confront us, each and every one. We ask that you be with them, watch over them. Father, we just thank you for loving us so much, and in your son's precious name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Would you be seated, please? This county clerk, I don't see any notices, okay? Commissioners, do you have any comments that you care to make in the realm of public comments?
Welcome. Harry Walker back. Glad to have you back.
I'm glad he's finally a negative person. Okay. I do want to make the Commissioners aware, Commissioners, that we are going to have a special meeting on Monday, December the 21st. Just to give you a heads up, that agenda will be going out today. And we've also reserved December 30th for a special meeting if needed, at which time I don't think we have any agenda items for the 30th. But we do have the space booked in the event we need to, for whatever reason, come together on the 30th. So I don't know what your holiday plans are, your travel plans. I just wanted to give you a heads up on the agendas so that you wouldn't be surprised when they do come across and get posted, okay? I just want to remind those that might be watching on Facebook Live that we do have the COVID, the free COVID testing that is occurring in Grimes County. If you go to the Emergency Management website or the Grimes County website, it will give you the dates and locations, and most of those locations, I believe, are open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, with the exception of Christmas week. I believe they're open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. But again, if you will check with the, on the county website, if you check with the Emergency Management website, on Facebook, or on the Internet, it will give you the specific locations and dates. We've been doing four locations, north end up in Bedi's, middle of the road here in Anderson, and also Navasota. South end of the county is being serviced by Todd Mission. So take advantage of those free testings. You don't have to have a recommendation. You don't even have to have any symptoms. But if you're curious, if you were exposed, you might want to go through that process. It's a fairly easy process, and you should have your results in 24 to 36 hours. Anything else, anybody? Then with that, we're going to move into consent agenda items, number three, number four, number five, number six, and number seven. Number three is consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Five, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for November 2020 and authorize advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with Local Government Code See page six of this agenda if you need to see that report. Agenda item number six is consider and take action to approve the budget amendments and/or line item transfers. Agenda item number seven, consideration and possible approval of an electric line installation permit for Mid-South on County Road 447, and that would be our attachment number seven. So it's a fairly lengthy list of consent agenda items. Commissioners, any questions or comments regarding any of those that have been expressed, three through seven?
No questions. I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items three, four, five, six, and seven.
Second. I'm going to give it to Commissioner Dolbyansky there, Commissioner Mallard. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Cox on consent agenda items number three, four, five, and six, and seven, seconded by Commissioner Dolbyansky. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. That's a four-count. Let the record show that Commissioner Walker is not present for today's court. I understand that she's himself quarantined, so we wish her all the best and safety of that process. With that, we will now go to consent agenda item number eight. Lady Bulldogs? Ladies, if y'all would come on in, up by the podium, that area. Watch the court on the ground. And y'all are on Facebook Live, so you can watch it when you get back. We've invited, Commissioners, I've invited the Lady Bulldogs in. For special recognition, I have a proclamation that I would like to read in behalf, and then we'll get a group photo, and then we're going to also have a presentation of the proclamation at the school this Friday morning. And it states, whereas the Iola Lady Bulldog volleyball team defeated their opponent, the Crawford Ladies volleyball team in Garland, Texas, and whereas their victory was completed in a score of three sets to one, and whereas the Lady Bulldogs have now been designated the state champions, Class 2A for 2020, and whereas the Lady Bulldogs previously won state championships in 2015 and 2016, and, a lot of ands and whereas, but bear with me, and whereas now they again join the list of Grimes County state champions such as George Washington Carver State Basketball Tournament in 1959, it's probably before most of y'all were born, and Richards Boys Basketball in 1976, and Navasota Boys Basketball in 1990, and Navasota Football in 2012 and 2014, and Anderson Shiro Baseball in 20, in 2006. Now, therefore, we as the Commissioners' Court of Grimes County and the City Council of Iola do hereby designate Friday, December 2020, as Iola Lady Volleyball Bulldog Day in Grimes County, Texas. Signed, Joe Foulth III, Grimes County Judge. Congratulations to all of you. Can we get y'all to come up here in front? And opposed, Commissioners, if y'all could squeeze in, Shereen Dewey Erz. Andrew's going to take care of it for us? All right. Commissioner Mallard, can you squeeze in? Commissioner Cox?
Even with the podium.
Sir?
Even with the podium, stand up a little bit higher.
Doing the best I can.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Everybody smile big.
We are. Thank you. Ladies, thank you so much, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's always nice to have state champions in the county. And I'll see y'all Friday morning, okay? All right. Now it's back to the grind.
Have fun.
You bet. Pleasure, pleasure.
Congratulations.
Yes, have a good day.
Are y'all having an early out on Friday?
Yes, sir.
What time are they just?
Noon.
Noon? Okay, so when we do the Lady Bulldogs, we'll just claim they can have a half-day off.
That's right. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. All right.
Third one state champion left off of there.
Who's that?
Rodney Laszkowski won the state golf championship in 99, I believe.
Is that right? Well, I went back to the Navasota Examiner and their sports records, and that's what I got, so. And Commissioner Mallard, thanks for that correction you sent me. You bet. All right. I'm going to take authority and jump up to
Blue Jay.
Number 16, agenda item number 16, consider and take action to approve a 381 agreement with Blue Jay Solar. Blue Jay?
Blue Jay.
Blue Jay, would y'all fly in here? We're pulling your agenda item up.
Okay.
All right. Commissioners, just to update you where we're at with Blue Jay, if you recall, they are a group that wants to pull a solar farm into Grimes County. The basics, and Commissioner Mallard and I have been working with these folks, based on the court's agreement, we did appoint a committee of citizens and elected officials. We have had the initial meeting. We had a second meeting last week, and based on that second meeting, we have a proposal that we want to put before Commissioners. And if I get out of order on any of this, Mr. Foltz, let me know. You won't hurt my feelings like you have before, but I'll be okay with that.
You're so sensitive, dude.
Sir?
You're so sensitive.
I am. I am indeed. But what we have put together, get the information. What the committee has recommended, regardless of what Blue Jay has requested, because the question came up, we're going to do a 312, we're going to do a 381, because Blue Jay had requested an abatement, a tax abatement, we are not going to go the 312 avenue, the committee, and most of us involved have agreed that 381 is probably the most appropriate way for us to go. And our offering, I'll give you a lot of numbers in different colors. What we're proposing, Blue Jay had requested a 10-year abatement. The committee is going to recommend a three-year abatement, and we are recommending 100% abatement for year number one, 50% abatement for year number two, and 25% abatement for year number three.
And just for clarity, Judge, you're talking about a 381, which would be a reimbursement of the payment versus an abatement, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and keep me straight on the terminology.
Right. I think everybody, I think these folks know what you're talking about. I want to be clear.
Okay. Blue Jay has been very anxious. Both Craig and Stephen are with us this morning, have been very anxious to get the information, but I asked the committee to hold our discussion close to them, and this is the first their hearing of it, but I wanted to give it to you as a court before we even offer it to Blue Jay, because if the court does not agree with what the committee has recommended, then we've got to go back to the drawing board, or we say we're not doing anything at all.
Judge, could I talk a little bit on that?
Sure. And let me just, real quickly, John, Commissioners, what you have in front of you is, Blue Jay has told us that the lowest that they were talking about doing is 175 megawatt operation, and the largest, when they presented, was a 210 megawatt operation. So page one of the handout I gave you shows the numbers for the lowest, the 175 megawatt. You'll see that up at the top title. And then the second page, that's just reflecting if the numbers were at the 210 megawatt. We have also revised from what Blue Jay had originally submitted us, because with Commissioners' Court, we have reduced the tax rate for Grimes County. That correct tax rate, that reduced tax rate, is reflected in these numbers. Mr. Foltz?
I just want to be sure that Commissioners, that all members of the court are on the same page. We have guidelines for a big well of tax abatement that are approved every two years, and you're required to have those in place before you can grant an abatement. There's a requirement before you can grant an abatement to designate an area as a reinvestment zone. As you all know, Iola, I think, has designated this area as a reinvestment zone. That's not sufficient for you. If you wanted to move forward with an abatement, you'd still need to have a public hearing to decide whether to do a reinvestment zone. The alternative that you have, and again, this is for purposes of attracting businesses to come into the community, the other primary tool that you have is a 381 grant. I don't know that there's a lot of use of the 381 grant. I don't know what other counties are doing, but I certainly know that this county and my tenure here has only done it one time. It was at the request of the city because they were having HTRI headquarters move into the city, and they were not wanting to designate the area where that business was as a reinvestment zone. So they granted a 381, a 380, which is what the city has, the authority they have to give a grant. They granted a 380 and said, "County, would you consider a 381?" The county considered a 381. I don't remember the terms, and I don't even remember if, I think it was granted for a short period of time. And the 381 is not, the grant is realistically only limited by your imagination. My research originally, when the city asked for that with HTRI, was to find that some county had given a 381 grant for the purpose of a helicopter. I just stand up in my brain, I don't remember what the use was. But because of my concerns, that you all have heard multiple times about equal protection and deprocess, and given the fact that the legislative scenario for a tax abatement under 312 requires guidelines to be in place before you grant an abatement, it seemed to me that we could easily extrapolate that same idea over to 381. We need guidelines in place, and we'll make folks adhere to these guidelines before we will grant this abatement, or grant this, give this grant. That grant that was developed for that initial purpose was to do a reimbursement of ad valorem that was paid, or that were paid. And so that's what our guidelines say. Talk about the amount of, number of employees, the amount of investment, talk about the limited number of years. The terms that are in there now, though, say it can't be, or it must be, it can't be in a reinvestment zone. Obviously, that's inconsistent with the circumstances before you, because Iola has designated the area as a reinvestment zone. So there's at least that change that needs to happen, and also says not for, grants won't be given for electricity generation companies, and this, or instance, and that would be, yeah, power generation, right. And that would be another issue that is in your guidelines today that this would be inconsistent with. There's also provision says it will be in a municipality who's also given a grant of a 380, and that's not the case here. We're not talking about being a municipality. Maybe one other thing that I don't recall, and Jesse can remind me, but there's, one other thing is, I think, that is inconsistent with the contemplated agreement in front of you. There's one other thing in our guidelines that's inconsistent with the agreement. Doesn't necessarily matter to me how you handle this, but I would think that you would want to seriously consider revising your guidelines to say that a circumstance like this is permissible per the guidelines versus having the agreement now say, "I'm going to grant variance one, variance two, variance three, variance four," and that's what the proposed agreement that I think you all may have today. That's what it says essentially, and I understand why that was done. It's not anything negative, it's just a question of, we've talked about this, I think, from the inception, there may be things that we need to amend in our guidelines that is, you know, the gatekeeper, the shoe for folks that can come and make the application. We may need to have that discussion either now or shortly after this agreement is considered. For you to determine that, hey, these are what our guidelines are going to say so that you treat every party the same that comes before you. To me, that's always the question is, are you going to have guidelines that you're going to stray away from on a regular basis such that the exception becomes the rule? Well, that should then become the rule. You should change your rules. You're guarding against circumstance where another entity comes to you next week and says, "We have power generation, and, you know, we're, we believe that we're similar to that other entity, and we believe we deserve the same treatment, and if you deny them the grant, you're going to have to explain why that company was denied and this company was granted," or, you know, vice versa kind of thing. So I'm always cognizant of that, and I hope that you're always cognizant of that. There's also mention in the 381 guidelines about a public hearing, and it's not, it's not perfect clarity, which thereself is, if you ask the lawyer, but it could be a question of whether what was intended was a public hearing like we do on replays, where you have something right before the approval of the agreement to have the public given the opportunity and see it on the agenda if they wanted to be here to make comment about it. So in theory, this agreement could involve three separate actions. One is consider modifying the guidelines, the other is, or another is to have a public hearing, and the third would be to approve the specific agreement. I'm not insisting that you go that route, but if this doesn't get approved today, it seems to me, in order to check all the boxes of any concern that anyone might have, those three things might be a route, or putting those three things on one agenda might be a route that you want to go. The way that they've drafted the agreement at this point, with the red lines to our, I think, the standard agreement, indicate that this court is giving a variance to the guidelines that we already have in existence. My preference would be that you change the guidelines to reflect that you're okay with this circumstance, you're going to be okay with not a municipality, it's in a reinvestment zone, power generation, you're going to be okay with that, no matter who walks in the door. My preference would be you change the guidelines to reflect that. Some other things I think that we may need to talk about along the way, I think Jesse may have some questions as well, or some comments. I would note that, and I don't have the answer to this, but I just raised the question, in year one, you're going to have the rollback issue, and so when you say 100%, that's going to be a big old number. That's going to include the rollback amount, the last three years that would have been, they would have been taxed by that property many commercials. So when you're doing 100% in the first year, that's going to be a big year. I just want to be sure, call attention to that. In fact, it's not that these are going to be the same every year. That first year is going to include three years' worth of back taxes.
No, that would only apply to the actual solar farm. That would not include the rollback taxes.
What would apply? This is made.
100%.
The grant? Okay. I wasn't aware of that. Okay.
Yeah, no, that's not a.
I didn't see that in the agreement, so we need to make that clear.
Let me just get a little more information. Again, it's going to, it's going to take Commissioners' Court to say, yes, this is okay with us, this is an offer we'd like to make to Blue Jay. Blue Jay might then say, no chance, and they walk out the door, okay? And whatever the decision is on their part, okay, I get that. One thing I did do, I called Craig and I called Stephen, because there was, I'll say, a push to get this on the agenda, to get a decision made so you folks and your investors could move forward. I asked the question, is there, you know, some type of a government grant or rebate or something that if we don't have it done by the end of this year, are you going to be penalized, or are you going to lose out on that? And their response was no. So that gave me a little bit of relief in time. I'm not willing for us as a court to drag our feet, but I guess part of their anxiousness was, they originally said that this project would probably come on board around September or October, construction-wise, next year, and then be ready for production in the middle of 2022. And it's my understanding now that they're anxious to get it done so they can get their contractors lined up, because they think there's a potential earlier start time, March or April of 2021, which would put them in a power-producing mode sooner than the middle of 2022. So I say all of that to share with you. Commissioner Mallard, you're a part of the committee, and you've been in the meetings. Do you, have I left anything out, or is there anything that you want to add?
No, I think you covered it pretty well.
And I have had lengthy conversations with our head auditor, Jesse Murphy, not that I've understood all the things that she's told me. And I've also talked with Shannon Sanders over in the Tax Office. One of our committee members, Bob Leeper, who was once upon a time the city manager for Baytown, has been very instrumental in sharing his knowledge and giving information to us for some things to think about. So anyway, I guess step one would be, court, if you're in agreement, then we'll make this offer to Blue Jay, and then we'll go from that point. If you're not of the opinion this is something that we want to do, then we just have to tell these folks that we have made a decision not to make an offer. However, I do feel a little bit of an obligation, because in, in the 381, it does give us the authority to approve a committee to review this and somewhat listen to their recommendations, and the committee's recommendation is, make this offer to Blue Jay.
So Judge, I mean, the committee's recommendation is that, but we need to make sure that we fall within the guidelines of the 381.
Understood.
So we need to probably do as John, consider what John has mentioned, and that is the guidelines, amend the guidelines, modify the guidelines.
Right. But I guess my point, Jesse, is if the court's not willing to make this offer to Blue Jay, at this point in time, there's no reason to modify the 381. So I think this is step one. Step two, then, John, we should probably modify the 381.
So you're just giving the general terms today and seeing if they're interested in the general, in the.
That's right.
Let me make one other point, and Stephen asked me about this, I want to be sure that we hashed this out, because relevant today to the item today, but it also will go into the thought of the guidelines. There's one fee, one application for the 312. It seems silly to me that you would have somebody make two applications, one for a 381 that has one committee, one for a 312 that has another committee, because then which committee gets to decide first whether it's an up or down, because the other one's going to be dependent upon what the other one does. So it seems to me it's one fee, probably one committee, and we ought to think about having the auditor on those committees, or the one committee, I guess, as we have done. I think we've done it the way it needed to be done. The question I think Stephen's raised is, is there another fee, another application, since I'm not going, since you guys are considering not going with an abatement, but instead with a 381? I think in the future, we ought to say it's one fee, one application for both purposes, and give the committee discretion to decide which is more appropriate.
And John, would we be able to add this as an exhibit A to the contract? So isn't that what was discussed as well? Is this being added as an exhibit?
You bet. We can, is enough discretion in 381 to do it now that the court believes it's appropriate?
And there was some other language that was recommended by, or suggested by the Tax Assessor's Office, that once we would put this in front of Blue Jay, and let's say a deal is done, you folks agree with it, their concern was, okay, they're the ones that are going to get beat up year after year on valuation of, you know, what's, what's that facility worth, because there's a pretty significant and rapid devaluation of what that solar farm is going to be worth from a material standpoint. As new technology comes out, oh, that's old technology, so it's only worth this much. So very rapidly, the assessed value would be going down, 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 therefore, the tax revenue that the county would enjoy is going to go down, down, down. So there was a concern about that, and didn't know if we could, John, at some place or some point, put in, you know, there's a, there's a minimum value that the facility would be evaluated on. Is that correct, Jesse?
Right. So it wouldn't be based upon the actual appraisal value for the full 25 years, it would be based upon the numbers that they presented as the values? So this would be considered an exhibit, and this is what, so if their value in year 10 or year 6 was less than this, they would have to make up the difference and pay 20 the difference according to this exhibit.
Right. So we create some floor in there. You can certainly do that. This, just keep in mind, this is a reimbursement of taxes. You can say. You can say, so they're paying the taxes and then getting reimbursed the amount of taxes that they're paying. You can certainly say, I'm going to draw some threshold. You could, as I understand it, fund a helicopter. I'm not sure I was clear about that. So if you can fund a helicopter, you can do just about anything you want to in this agreement.
So what you're talking about, Ms. Murphy, that could be done based on production levels, correct? No?
That you cannot do it based on production levels.
Right. You can, but I wouldn't. I think you guys got in that bind with another agreement. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, the kilowatt generation went down for TMBA and so there was a pilot that was in place, or put in place by agreement.
And this is a percentage abatement as opposed to a pilot abatement? So it's based upon the value of the plant as opposed to the, and if it was a pilot, we would do it based on the actual size of the plant, 210 megawatts times the pilot payment, but we're not going down that route, so.
And I just want to make the public comment that based on our conversation thus far this morning, we're not trying to beat you guys up and run you out of town, but what we are trying to do is make sure that if we do move forward in this, that we're taking the best care of our citizens that we possibly can. That's our responsibility. So undoubtedly, y'all have been through this more than this court has, but we're just, we're concerned about doing a business transaction that looks good today, but two years, five years, 10 years, we determine, wow, that was the wrong thing to do. So.
Judge, can I say a couple things?
You may. Stephen, do you want a copy of this?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Craig. Would you introduce yourself, please, for others that don't know, and if you want to take your mask off?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'm Craig Adair, Senior Development Manager with Open Road Renewables, the lead developer on the Blue Jay solar project. And we've been speaking for a number of months. Sorry, I don't have that turned on. Thank you very much for your consideration. We are indifferent to the procedural question that the county attorney has raised, whether, if you decide to make this offer, whether it's a set of variances that we would need to be able to do this agreement, or you revising your guidelines. I appreciate your raising the point. The things that have happened since we last spoke is that we've done a number of more surveys, we're a little bit further along. Things are looking good on our end. And the reason for the urgency is just that, as the judge said, we had originally looked at this project as starting construction in the late summer or fall of next year. It's come online in 2022. We now, in conversations with different folks, see an opportunity to start more like in March or April. And so that just means there's a whole lot that has to happen and we can't move forward until we know what the finance of the project are. And so we appreciate your consideration. If you decide to do this, of course, as you pointed out, this is the first time we've seen these and so we will need to run out either now and run some models and get on the phone and confer with folks, or, you know, later today or something, because this is the first we're seeing this. And so I just want to make sure you're aware of those things.
Yes, absolutely. And so I think, again, step one, as a court, we need to say yes or no, we want to make this offer to Blue Jay. Then y'all can dismiss and do whatever you need to do. If you can get some information before we adjourn, we can come back to that agenda item, just to hear your comments. If push came to shove, we do have an agenda, a special meeting set up for next Monday that we could put you on if you didn't get your information today or in a position to discuss what you want to do. All right, with that, Commissioners, you have before you an offer that the committee wanted us to submit to Blue Jay and propose to them. Before we do that, is there a motion? Any questions? We'll give them another opportunity after the second, but if there's a motion, is there a motion?
I move to offer Blue Jay a three-year grant through the 381 agreement in the amount of 100% the first year, 50% the second year, and 25% the third year, and to modify the 381 agreement accordingly.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number, excuse me, on agenda item number 16 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion at this time?
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
So there, there's no consideration for a pilot payment or any, anything?
Commissioner, we had, we and the committee had discussion on that and then Jesse and I had discussion with Mr. Leeper on that just yesterday. Jesse, are you, do you feel you're in a position?
So on, like an abatement, to give an abatement?
Yeah, still.
So the committee, I feel like, felt that the abatements were given for economic development and the number of jobs that this is going to, one of the main, one of the main issues is jobs. And the number of permanent jobs that this would create is one at the most, maybe a part-time in addition to that one.
Couple of part-times.
Yeah. And so we didn't feel as a committee that an abatement would be in the best interest of the county.
So an abatement, this is under a different.
Well, the tax abatement, the 312.
Yeah, it's a 381.
And I agree with what she said. That's, it doesn't fit in the abatement.
No.
But it more specifically fits in the 381.
And the committee was adamant that the 312 was not appropriate. So Commissioner, I don't know if your question's been answered or not.
I really hadn't had a whole lot of time to process any of this, so I don't know. I mean, I don't know what questions to ask per se with regard to this agreement. It's difficult for me to.
Sure.
Without, no one.
Understood. I think this is step one, that we make this offer, you know, to Blue Jay to let them, like I say, noodle the numbers and see if they want to be a part of this, because we still have to then go back and modify our 381 and that's going to be a decision that we'd have to approve, keep that process. So I do believe before the ink is dry on anything final, we're going to have more time, more discussion and more time for you to do your research also.
So for clarity, the motion is those general terms, but assuming they agree to the general terms, that we're going to hammer out the written document that still needs to be approved by the court.
That is correct. Like I said, this is step one, because if they can't agree to this, then at this time, we don't have anything else to discuss.
And to further clarify, the pilot payment is usually the same amount of award, this, I don't know which one you're looking at, but it would be the same as that number, just divided by the megawatts and divided by three years. So you're going to get the same amount of money, it's just that it's not divided equally over three years.
But is the question, under a 381, could that grant instead be a pilot? Because I think, as I understand, the way the 381 works is that we pay 100% of the taxes in January of the calendar year.
And we give you a reimbursement.
And you get a reimbursement later in the year.
That's correct.
If the question is, could that instead be restructured such that instead of paying 100% of the taxes at the beginning of the year, we pay a pilot? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, and I think just like to know that a pilot would be the same amount of money coming in as opposed to a person. And Judge, when you reset this for that, assuming they approve those terms or they say they're willing to move further in the process, let's see, are you going to put on the agenda for those three items that I mentioned, amend the guidelines, public hearing, and then approve the document?
I'm absolutely in favor of following your recommendation.
Okay, all right.
At least on the agenda.
So just so I'm clear, we're just moving forward with the offer of this deal today without any final vote prior to the paperwork being sent.
Yes, sir.
There are lots of terms that'll have to be addressed. I have a proposal from Mr. Van Dyke about various things, and then we also hear that the CAD has suggested we have language about valuation thresholds and what have you. So all that'll have to be worked out in the final document. And I'm hearing that that is not being approved now because no one has seen it. I don't want the discretion to be the document that I'm happy with. I want it to be the document you've seen and you're happy with.
So Commissioner, you're correct. We're just, only thing we're agreeing to, if we agree to it, is to let Blue Jay walk off of this and talk to their investors. Is there further discussion? Okay, we have a motion before the court on agenda item 16 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose. That motion carries. Gentlemen, if you want to exit, if you want to make a call, and if you get an opportunity to give us a response before we adjourn, that's great. Okay?
Any idea how long that will be?
No, because sometimes we move fast and sometimes we move slow.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Billion-dollar question.
How long's the court going to be? I don't know. All right, we're going to get back on schedule. We're going to go back to agenda item number eight has been completed. Agenda item number nine, we were going to pass out service awards. Those two individuals are on duty and not available, so we'll go to agenda item number 10. Mr. Al Peeler. Oh, good morning. Agenda item number 10, update on ongoing projects, Grimes County Courthouse, Grimes County Jail, Grimes County Justice Center. Drop a set here for Commissioner Walker now, I'll put it in her box. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning.
So we'll start off with the Grimes County Historical Courthouse.
Yes, sir.
We are almost, if I would quit being so picky, we would be finished. I was cleaning the other day and found some missing hardware on a window, so I picked the phone and said, hey, you're not done yet. We're waiting on the doors. We're installing a brass seal in the door jamb, so it will seal the door up and they got some reblazing to do and then we'll be complete.
Okay, say those again. You got the window hardware, what else?
Window hardware and the threshold hardware to seal the door so it does not allow water to blow in.
Is that the north end, south end, or both?
Both, all three.
Oh, the second floor?
North, south, and up top. But that's it. Any questions on that?
It looks nice.
It does.
It does, it's very impressive.
We'll go to the jail.
All right.
Jail, the control system is up and running and it's working properly. We just have to train some employees on, before they could just let everything open up, now we have a strict, very strict control system. So if you open one door, the control system in the next unit says, oh, wait, we got to compensate. We can't just leave doors open. We got to close them. We got to keep it tight so that the control system can work. But we are online and it is working properly.
Very good.
We just changed out the unit that is amazing, 20 years that it lasted, a rooftop air unit usually has a five to seven-year lifespan. This unit that we changed out that went out was the very, one of the very first ones that when the jail was built. So you got your money's worth on that one. So we replaced it and we have a 10-year warranty on that. The 10-year warranties will start kicking in now, now that I have taken over. As far as mold remediation, we're waiting to state to open that up.
And we're just still on hold because of the jail lockdown, so to speak? Okay. But with controls, updated air conditioning, when we do get back in, we do remediate the mold, we should be done with it?
We should be done. And it's making a big difference. We're holding right now, we're holding, and we're at low, low percentage because of the weather, but when we did get the rain and it was warm, we held it about 58%, still 3% higher.
You're talking about the humidity?
The humidity, but it's a lot better than it was, 83% when it first took over. So, and 55% is what the human body likes and that's usually what a building likes. Building would like to see it at about 40, but then everybody would walk around there with bloody noses and stuff.
Chaplains. As long as the county attorney's kind of satisfied over there.
He's only got a few months left in that building, so.
We want him comfortable all that time, too.
He's moving into the good building.
I can't tell if he's smiling right now or frowning, but.
I'm smiling.
Okay.
I haven't felt nothing in my back yet, so.
I will say that there hasn't been, quite some time, there's not been any new mold issues. So when we originally, when it was originally treated, it handled most of the problem and addressed much of what was in the law library.
Very good.
As my office. And I understand why we hadn't done a second round of remediation, but we're not seeing continued issues. It's just what occurred months ago is very difficult, basically.
Thank you.
Just want to clarify what you said. You said he's moving into a good building. I believe both of them are good buildings, correct?
Let me clarify how your maintenance director feels. The good building is the one that stands right there in the name tree.
He has a love and a relationship. He loves the old courthouse.
I have a love affair with that courthouse.
All right, tell us about the justice center.
So, well, let me just get my glasses on, Harry. So what I put in front of you today, I approved this change order. It was, anyhow, it's a change order for $14,000. There's, there's no way around it. We've hit a bad vein of soil. The map that I gave you shows you it's the east parking lot. They kept digging and digging and digging and finally, Guestner's sent out a report and it's very fat, so they have suggested that we bring in soil, add limes. Lime to it to get it to the right height and stabilize it. There, there wasn't anything we could have did about it. I mean, they kept digging and digging and digging and Harry, quite frankly, said, how far are you going to dig down? Well, at some point, you just got to stop. And that's what we did and this is a change order that I approved and it just needed to be done. I mean, there wasn't, if there was something we could have did to save some money, we would have, but there wasn't anything to do on that.
This isn't under the actual structure. This is parking lot, correct?
This is park, yeah, parking lot. And that's, the problem with that is if we, if we didn't do it, then we have broke concrete. It just moved.
Just pay me now or pay me later?
Pay me now or pay me later.
Normal soil tests aren't going to pick up a certain, you know, vein and that's worse than others.
It was a big vein.
Is that the back diagram? Is that what you're indicating, the parking lot that had the bad dirt?
Yes, so the black mark is where the bad dirt was. And I guess, Harry, you can correct me wrong, we were probably 12 to 16 feet below grade when you questioned it.
Yeah, they went a long way.
Yeah, and they couldn't find anything there.
Okay.
We are, if there's no, is there questions about the change order that I We are, if there's no, is there questions about the change order that I approved? It's moving along great, that's the first little hiccup that we really had. I just got the plans about the new driveway, the design, they're trying to put it designed. We got an electrical set of drawings still being, waiting to be approved, and then I'll bring them plans to you when we get them all wrapped up.
So you did get, you did get a drawing of the design?
I did, I did, but I don't have any electrical plans, I don't have any of that.
Okay. And Commissioners, just so you're aware, that land swap deal is completely done, and it's been recorded with the county, so bills were paid and titles transferred.
So that's the other thing that's big in movement, the process of the building. We are a one-sided drywall in, our windows are eighty percent in. We are now, we run, we had an IT meeting with them, they're running the wires for IT. Greg had to tell them how, that he wanted it laid out. We had that meeting, that's, that's being done as we speak. We're getting ready to do our tie roads for our brick, and then it will start, after we get them, then the bricks will start going in. Block wall for the prisoner, walkway and hallway, it, it is done, they got twenty percent left on the south wall to do, but besides that, it, it's going good. We've had, you also have your PMP in there. We've had eighty-five days of weather, and it is muddy. I get out there, and I'm a big boy, and I think I have the same amount of weight that I carry every day on the bottom of my shoes, so. They're making progress on the inside, it's kind of, it's really delaying us on the outside with the weather, so, and it doesn't look like it's gonna clear up here.
But the inside work is still going on because you're pretty much weathered in, dried in?
Almost, or almost dried. Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to do inside work. Problem is getting to it sometimes is a problem.
Okay.
Is there any questions about the new justice center?
Do you have a proposed move date?
Probably June, mid-June, I would guess at this point, depending on what the weather does here, that will slow us down a little bit.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Peeler? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We'll now go to agenda item number eleven, Human Resources, and Ms. Toledo Coleman.
Your turn.
Consider and take action to implement a special sick leave policy due to the Families' First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA, or just Act, ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty, attachment number eleven. Ms. Coleman and I have had some conversation on this, and we've also even received some conversation from TAC, to the point we thought our offices might be bugged, because exactly what we were talking about is exactly what TAC responded, but Ms. Coleman, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner. So I gave you three attachments. One is the actual policy for the Families' First Coronavirus Response Act. This act is set in place to start April first, and it expires December thirty-first. Currently, the county is paying our employees regardless of the reason that they have to be off, due to COVID exposure, quarantining, sick child, or daycare. This act says that we were required to provide our employees up to eighty hours of paid leave for want of qualifying exemptions. We have been paying our employees regardless if it's related to Coronavirus Act. So what we need to decide is, are we gonna continue to pay our employees as we've been doing all along since April first, or are we going to change the policy and no longer provide the paid leave without the employees using their own personal sick or vacation? The second sheet that you were provided is a spreadsheet, and I tried to make it as big as possible, but it was a lot of information. It gives you a total of hours used by department for the special codes that we have, for the quarantine, or for those employees who are actually off due to COVID, and then also on the right-hand side gives you the total cost for each department. The very last page at the bottom, it shows you the, the total hours for the county that we have paid out, as well as the compensation rate.
And that was as of when?
Monday.
Monday, okay, and we know.
Now, that does not include, currently, we have five employees who are recently out due to COVID, and then we have four that have recently just come back, and their time and hours and money is not reflected in this report.
So by, not to embellish or anything, but by the end of the year, we could probably be at a hundred thousand dollars.
Easily.
And keep in mind, Commissioners, these are monies that we already had budgeted in our budget last year, and these are monies, salaries that we have budgeted in our budget this year. I guess one of the, Toledo and I felt we needed to bring it to your decision, because when this all started, we said, we're going to take care of our employees, and we'll continue to pay them, because there were a lot of unknowns with the COVID and the quarantine, and how long, and so on and so forth. So we're just trying to come to a conclusion, because the act is ending, at least the federal act, December thirty-first of this calendar year. We do have the salaries budgeted for the employees, so the money's there, but at some point, we're gonna have to, at some point, I feel like we need to address how we're gonna handle it once the act is over and reimbursements quit coming in. We don't want to put any of our employees in harm's way, we don't want any of our employees recklessly coming to work in lieu of quarantine or something along that line, but we do need to make sure that we're in control of what's going on.
And also, in this spreadsheet, it does not include the hours that we were given to the employees prior to April first. We had some issues back in March, and anytime it was related to COVID, we were coding it to admin time, so that's also not reflected in these numbers, so we could possibly already be at the hundred thousand.
So one of the handouts that you have, and I think we all got an email, but indicates that COVID treatment with regard to insurance payments after January first of twenty twenty-one will be paid like any other illness.
Correct. Right now, from what they said, it said no matter the cost sharing, co-pays, or deductibles, will be required for COVID nineteen through January twenty twenty-one, so if our employees do contract or need to go get tested, they can go to facility, present the insurance, and there's no cost to them after the twenty-first, after January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, it will be treated just like any other illness that you go to the doctor for. So the current policy that we put in place, or the proposed, or suggested policy that we put in place, is if our employees are exposed, they wait five days, they go get tested, if they have a negative test, they can return back to work. If they get a positive test, they stay out for the fourteen days, retest, and then they can come back to work. CDC has recently changed their guidelines, and that's another sheet that I provided to you. We're having some issues with multiple exposures, some of our employees who have tested positive, and then they get over their symptoms, and they retest, and they're positive again. I pulled this directly from the CDC website, it says, people who have tested positive for COVID nineteen do not need to quarantine or get retested again for up to three months, as long as they do not develop, develop symptoms. People developing symptoms again within three months of their first bout with COVID may need to be tested again, if there's no other cause identified for their symptoms. We recently had an employee who was positive, and it took a couple tries before they could get a negative test to return. Some medical providers aren't allowing their patients to be retested, they said there's no need if they're not showing any symptoms, so we've been allowing our employees to come back with a doctor's note saying that they can return to work after their quarantine period. It also states that, on the back page, it says, the local public health authorities make the final decision on how long the quarantine should last, that they have a recommendation that after ten days of not testing, after seven days of receiving a negative test, test must occur on day five or later, and then that they should stop quarantine. So it used to be fourteen, then it was ten, now it's seven, and now it's like, well, if the medical provider says you're okay to go back to work, then you can go back to work.
So it's a moving target.
Refresh my memory, what's the policy on testing? We enacted a policy that we pay for testing?
Up to three tests, I think. If any employee occurs any out-of-pocket expenses due to being tested for the virus, the county would reimburse them. To my knowledge, we've only maybe had a handful.
Because Commissioner, we've, because since we made that policy originally, now we've had free testing in many locations and many places, so that, you know, people have, they have enough to get tested without any out-of-pocket, just drive up and get done, and they're, they're there.
We may need to relook at that policy, though, if affected January the first, the insurance is going to, there won't be any free testing.
And Mr. Lilly, I don't know what your feel on that is, or what your knowledge on that is.
I have not heard anything from the state as to what their, their plan is after the first of the year, but all indications are that they're gonna pull back from testing. All, like what we've got going right now has all been provided by the state through TETM, and that's, again, I would not, I would not plan for free testing after the first of the year, it may change, but it's a new administration, Biden is saying that he's gonna put new stuff in place, there's gonna be a time lag, even if he does follow through on that, so, like I said, I would say we should probably plan for the way it was before we had the free testing.
Thank you.
I have talked to some other counties about what they plan to do. Most of the counties that I've talked to said that they pay up to the eighty hours, they'll continue to pay up to the eighty hours if true exposure to COVID, or they're required to quarantine due to medical recommendation, and then anything over that, their employees have to use their own personal sick or bank hours, that they have to be off any longer than the eighty hours. And some have been doing that for the whole time, whereas our county has opted just to pay our employees regardless of how many hours they have to be out due to COVID, and if you look at the spreadsheet, you will see there are a few that were well over the eighty hours already.
I guess from an HR perspective, what's your opinion as far as when we start treating this as like any other illness?
I don't know if that's an HR qualification. My recommendation is to present you with the information that I get from other counties based on what other counties are doing.
But at some point, we're gonna have to make a decision, when do we treat?
How the county wants to continue to work.
When do we treat COVID as any other illness?
Right, so if you're asking what the options would be, one option is to continue business as usual, which we pay our employees regardless of why they're being quarantined due to COVID exposure. Two is we pay up to the eighty hours, and then the employee needs to use their own personal sick and vacation, and then option three would be just to not have to pay up to the eighty hours, because this act is expiring, and if somebody comes down with COVID, then they use their own sick and vacation if need be.
Any thoughts or comments, Commissioners? I'm gonna make the recommendation that we take no action at this time, see what, because we have the salaries covered, see what happens with the new administration, if and when that does, does happen, and with the vaccine now becoming available, I had a talk with Aaron Mariotta with St. Joe's this morning, that they are expecting their shipment is coming to Brazos, but the first responders and hospital staff will be getting it first, and then a rollout, so. I guess my recommendation at, at this moment in time is we take no action. Any, anybody adverse to that?
So we'll continue as we have been.
I think so, but I, but I would ask you to keep the court updated of any changes you become aware of, one way or the other, and we're not gonna be a sheep county, but, you know, if there's a consensus amongst all counties, there's a better way to handle this than the way we are, I'd like you to advise us.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the effort of putting all this together, it's been a real challenge. All right, so agenda item number eleven, no action at this time. We'll go to agenda item number twelve, Mr. Greg Cannon, Grimes County IT Director, discuss and take action to approve the purchase of archived social software to protect the county and media sites and county websites as related to SB nine forty-four, or nine four-four, which took effect September one, twenty twenty, see attachment number twelve. So would you walk us through that, Ken?
Good morning, Fisher, Judge, my name is Greg Cannon, I'm the Director of IT for Grimes County. This request that I brought before the courts today, as the judge mentioned, the state legislature back in May introduced a bill, nine forty-four, as part of the open records request related to social media and websites, and it was adopted September of twenty twenty. Basically, it indicates that any activity done on county or government websites or social media is open to public records requests, and we have to be able to produce even records that have been deleted, so for instance, if somebody in the county gets irate at one of these meetings and posts some stuff on social media, and then decides, two minutes later, that was a bad idea, and they remove it, we've gotta be able to produce that record. And today, we have, there's no way of, internally of us capturing those records unless we had somebody sitting on the website or on the social media site, taking screenshots every thirty seconds to see what was going on twenty-four seven. So the, in my opinion, the state legislature, they did one of those things, in my opinion, without thinking, they introduced a bill that puts a lot of burden on the county to produce records without, without full impact and the cost.
They, they, they thought about it, they just didn't care.
Yeah, and so this has put a huge burden on us from a liability standpoint. There are people, when visiting with some of these companies, they, they know people that literally move around the country, that will go to a state, post something on their social media site, and then remove it, and then a few months later, a couple of years later, they'll ask for open records requests, and if they can't produce that record, then they sue that county, and they go around making a living doing that. So they, there's one gentleman in Florida that they've tracked across the country that does that kind of stuff. So, and these, these counties just don't have the money really to fight it, and they don't have the records to back up with open records, as I said, so. That's why this, that's why I brought this before the court today, because we're liable to anything that anybody posts, public citizens post on our social media site, whether they delete it or not. And another thing about that is, the law says that we have to retain those records outside of Facebook or Twitter or Instagram, because those aren't archiving, they don't do archiving, so we can't go back to Twitter like you could AT&amp;T and say, hey, show me all the text messages from his phone for the last six months. AT&amp;T can do that, but Facebook, Twitter, all of, they don't, they don't store that information, definitely, once somebody deletes something off Facebook, it's gone, and so the law states. And so the law states that we have to retain those records outside of Facebook, outside of Twitter, and that's what this archive social program does. It captures all of our changes, any updates, additions, corrections to our website or social media sites, and stores that record where we can search it offline. So if we get an open records request, we can dump all the records for the last two years, or we can say, show me any social media posts that were deleted by John Smith in the last six months. It's very granular how we can report that data to, to the citizens, request the open records.
The annual cost is, at least on this first contract, is $4,788.
That's annual, yeah.
And that's not something we had budgeted.
Now, I do, I have been working with Jesse, I've got a project for some network upgrades that I can forego for this year. I can forego it until October next year, I can put it in 2021 budget, or 2022 budget, and I've got money to cover this for this year, but I just have to put it in the budget for the next year to cover for the following years. And this, this contract allows us to archive up to 3,000 posts or additions or changes a month, and it allows us to monitor up to 10 sites. So if there's a county court of law Facebook page, the Grimes County Facebook page, we can, there's 10 of those accounts we could set up in the monitoring system, and no additional charge.
So what about account, personal accounts?
There is some stipulation in there, and there's some actual court cases where there was a mayor, on her personal Facebook page, she made a comment about some business that was happening at the county, and they asked for a public, public records request from her personal account, and her and her attorney said, you can't do that, that's my personal account. Well, they ruled against her, where she posted something about county business on her personal site, they asked for public records requests, they couldn't retrieve it, they lost, I think it was $75,000 that they lost in that lawsuit.
So what, a county employee sitting in a county machine makes a post to their personal account, is that archived?
That, I don't know, no, that wouldn't be archived, because it's tied to each account. Now, just because you have a personal account, doesn't mean that you, that it's, that the person's entitled to open records requests just because you're an employee of the county like.
Right, true, but if you make that using a county computer, would it then be subject to open records?
I'd say it probably would be. It'd be hard for them to track the IP of where it came from, which computer made that post, because we're embedded behind a firewall, and you can't see that information.
But could you do that?
Uh, no.
But if he can't do it, it can't be done, Commissioner.
Well, I understand that. He is one mean, tough guy.
Another option, we could send our attorney to the Supreme Court to get this overturned. Any takers?
Silence.
So I noticed the end quote here is for the sheriff, it's got the sheriff on here. Is this a county-wide deal?
Yes, it would cover the sheriff's website, our website, our social media, any, I don't know how many Facebook pages, Twitter, Instagram accounts we have, but this account would allow us to monitor up to 10.
So if any exists that we don't know about, we'll have to be letting know of those accounts if we're going to try and back them up.
Yeah.
So how would you find that out? You going to have to go to each department?
We'd have to go to each department head, say, hey, we need to know, because of liability or potential 944, we need to know if you have a social media account or website, so that we can monitor, so that we're protected.
That ought to be fairly easy to capture, and fairly quick to be done.
Yeah, it should be.
Now, is this $4,700 based on a maximum of 10? And if we found out we had 15, does the price go up?
Yeah, you can add up to hundreds, but, you know, it would go up, yeah.
Just whatever you're willing to pay for.
Yeah.
If we find that we only have five, and we're only going to authorize five, does the price go down?
Yeah, this is a no.
Okay.
So what, who authorizes those pages? If the county's having to pay for them, can somebody just come in, I mean, that, it's a budgetary issue now. I mean, i- if the price is going to continue to go up, I don't know, and I'm just making an example, one department could have three or four Facebook pages, or accounts, Twitter.
And, yeah, it would have to be a county policy that says, look, because this is going to cost us money now, now that you're opening Facebook or Twitter accounts or Instagram accounts, it, it adds budgetary constraints, because now we have to monitor all those in the policy of the Commissioner, we would see, you, you can't have a Facebook page for your department unless it's approved by the Commissioner.
Are you aware of any Instagram or Twitter accounts that are county business?
Not that I'm aware of.
Strictly Facebook at this point in time, yeah.
So Greg, maybe a recommendation, you know how you send out every budget year a form with the software, and maybe add that to that page, how many they currently have for their Facebook account?
Because I think we have four, we have four websites down, the DA, County Court of Law, the county website, and the sheriff's office.
Okay. So those four are four of the 10 that we're talking about?
And then there's the two Facebook, I know, the county.
County courthouse has a Facebook, and emergency management has a Facebook.
The sheriff's office.
Sheriff has, so that's seven.
And I don't know if the DA's office does one.
I know they have a website.
Okay, well, you can research that information, you can bring that back, but your mission today is to get approval from the court?
Yes.
But if you already have the money, okay, this is more of making us aware. So the action, consider and take action to approve the purchase of archived social software to protect the county, social media sites and county websites as related to SB There are no further questions, I make the motion, take action to approve the purchase of archived social software to protect the county and social media sites and county websites as related to SB 944.
Thank you.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 12 by Commissioner Dobianski, second by Commissioner Mallett, is there further discussion? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, that motion carries, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 13, consider and take action to approve the bids from Enterprise Systems for the Grimes County DOIP phone system and Grimes County Network System in the New Justice Center. Mr. Cannon?
I have some handouts of the.
Great.
Of the two bids.
Do you have information to read from?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, to recap, when we put the original bid out for the buildings, in my opinion, I think Al would agree as well, that the bid by P-GAL was approved too quickly, we didn't get a chance to review a lot of the stuff that was specifically pertaining to Al and HBAC and network and telephone system. So we had opted to pull those two components, those are the two bids you're looking at here, pull those two components out of the, out of the bid, and we were, we had decided, or I had decided to work with a preferred vendor, we've been using for years, Enterprise Systems. And the reason we wanted to use Enterprise Systems is they have a vast knowledge of our existing phone system and networks, because they've been helping us for years here. And when we're migrating from one office to the new building, while business is continuing in the county, it's real critical that we keep that infrastructure up, working solid, no problems and issues, and so it's very critical, in my opinion, more on the vendor that you choose to help with that migration than the actual hardware itself. Now, we have, I have recommended the kind of hardware that we wanted, and so when I came before court a couple of months ago, I had asked if the court approved this specific vendor, vendor, and at the recommendation of the county attorney and auditor's office to make sure that we stayed compliant with laws, is that we put this back out for bid for two weeks. That period has expired, the only bid that we got was from Enterprise, nobody else responded, and that's what these two bids are here. They have provided us the bonds, they emailed me copies last night of, of the bonds, but in speaking with Jesse, until, they have until the 21st to present the physical, the actual bonds, and we're holding a check, a cashier's check in lieu until those bonds are placed here with us. So they, they do have the bonds, they just, we just don't have the physical bond, we have copies of those bonds today.
But we have no reason to believe they won't be able to present them by the 21st, is that correct?
I, I have no reason, please.
This appears to be just a request for bids, I don't see the numbers, sort of like what it said after the request.
My apologies. The total bid for both packages is just under $300,000, for the network and the phone system.
I have $301,000, so $210,269.06 for the voiceover.
Voiceover.
Yeah, and then the $91,522.85 for the network, so it comes out to $301,000.
I'm going to ask you to repeat those, but before you do, which one is which on these handouts that you gave us?
It'll say at the very top, voiceover IP phone system for Justice Center Network, invitation to bid.
Oh, okay, all right. So Grimes County Justice Center Network, what's the value of that one, Jesse? Okay, and on the VO, voiceover network? Okay, thank you, ma'am, and that total was? Okay, thank you very much.
And currently, we have set aside the $358,000 for the phones and the courthouse security, so that only leaves the $56,208.09 for the courthouse security portion, for the justice.
And just for the record, we originally went out for bid to get estimates for these two systems for the courthouse, it was over a year and a half ago, so concessions were made, prices have gone up, so these, these numbers we're looking at today are a little bit higher than what we looked at two and a half years, or a year and a half ago.
Yeah, because the two, correct me if I'm wrong, with the $210,000 that we have in front of us now was about $163,000 when we did the initial request.
So just keep that in mind, because the courthouse security technology is probably going to still be the same, if not more, so we're going to be already over in that particular area that we set that money aside for, so we need to keep that in mind for other adjustments that we're making within the building.
Well, I think the auditor should go pick some leaves off the money tree.
Okay.
So we didn't have any other responses besides? We had it in the newspaper and all the website for two weeks. And the reason that we want to get started on this soon is because they can begin to design and begin to implement parts of this in the new building, so that as we get to move departments, it'll all be set up, we don't have to wait till the day that we move in and try to hook up this stuff. They can start installing a lot of it now, as soon as they, they can get access to the building, so that'll give us a head start if we can get this approved now.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the bids from Enterprise Systems for Grimes County. Second, on the two, on the two proposals sent. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 13 by County Judge Jill Fowles, second by Commissioner Dobianski, is there further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a comment, I mean, I would, just following up on what you just said about getting the network installed, I'd ask that you coordinate that to some degree with Al, so he's in the loop.
Yeah, he and I try to stay in contact pretty often, and he's real good about letting me know when things are, when he needs IT questions to ask on the building and stuff, so we're, we're staying pretty good in contact.
Okay, good request, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? That motion carries, thank you, Mr. Cannon. Roden Bridge Engineer Harry Walker, presentation of the Roden Bridge Report.
Good morning.
It's good to have you back, sir.
Thank you, glad to be back, I've climbed the walls for the last three weeks. The first thing on the Roden Bridge Report, as of Monday, everybody is back, Patrick's back, I'm back, and then, you know, Parkland is back, unfortunately, I just got a note, she just left sick again, so we're going to be shutting down the building and refueling it. She did come back with a negative test, so maybe it's just regular flu, we don't know, but we'll take the precautions.
Is she going to get tested?
I have not spoken to her, I assume she will, but that's one thing we need to, I would, I probably should have spoken up, I'm pleased, I don't, we do need to bring our policy into compliance with CDC, I think, because the RIC policy is you have to have a negative test to come back, but what's being told people when they go to get tested, even if they get positive, they're saying, you go back to work, here's your doctors' note, and so there's been inconsistency, and I think we do probably clarify that regardless of the pay issues and everything. But that's, that's the health report for Roden Bridge. Beyond that, we're putting out a lot of rock, we've had some moisture now, we've never graded the roads better. A couple of significant issues, Nalen Bridge has started the reconstruction of the 323 Bridge.
Oh.
That's a bid project, you know, awarded here, I think back in October. 323 will be shut down, probably a total of a lot, they've been at work for about a week now. Then the complete reconstruction, 60-foot clear span, concrete deck, you know, probably bridge.
But it's not a dead-end road, so they have in and out access.
No, it's actually a new road, and, and there are not a lot of people that actually live on that road, so it's not a huge inconvenience, everybody can go their, their opposite ways.
All right.
Couple of other things, we have both the 2016 and Hurricane Harvey GLO grant projects out for bids now, the ads are in the paper, posted online, we'll be taking bids here in early January, and award those contracts in late January. So 2016 is the Blackberry Community and a number of other roads. Hurricane Harvey, they're scattered, small projects, I think it's five different locations around the county, now, that's a $300,000 grant, 2016's a $2 million grant, so, and we're sort of deliberately putting them out at the same time, so we can get more interest, and, you know, maybe somebody can pick up the consolation prize if they don't get the big project.
Are they, are, not they, are you in compliance with all the reporting dates and everything that needed to be done on these?
Yes.
So I know there's going to be more reporting once work starts, but.
Yeah, the, the, GLO has been very aggressive on their monitoring, you've seen a lot of their monitoring performance records, we've been responding to those, a lot of the, the reporting questions have to do more with the, the structure of their milestone payments, they're looking for, you know, linear progress on your drawdowns, but their milestones don't allow that, so you have limited expenditures during the design phase, and, you know, massive expenditures during the construction phase.
Right.
But they wanna see a linear progression, and so they keep saying, "Oh, you're behind, you're behind," well, we're behind on billing because of the way they set up the milestones, they don't allow us to bill, for example, on the design phase, you get one billing at the beginning, you can go 30% upfront, and you don't get another one until the contract's aborted, so it throws it out of whack, so. But we're staying up with that, we've been able to respond to all your questions and satisfy them, but yes, we have more of these projects going on, you'll see more of those letters.
Yes, all right, thank you very much.
Uh, one other thing, just for note, uh, we have received construction plans for a new subdivision, Highway 30, this is adjacent to that oil field disposal site, uh, 68-lot subdivision, it's gonna be a significant one, have not received a plan on that yet, but it should be coming, uh, shortly.
Have they given you a name?
Muir Wood, Muir Wood, M-U-R, N-U-I-R, Wood.
Do you know anything about that, Commissioner?
I'm surprised, they're by the, by the industrial.
By the industrial and then the dump site, yeah.
Well, you know, I kinda wondered about that, too, but the industrial site, um, I believe they own like 135 acres.
Right.
And they've actually developed, you know, five or 10 acres there, so there's a lot of buffer around that facility, and that area is all very heavily wooded.
Right, yeah.
So I think there'll be, be adequate buffering, that I think it'd be an issue, I wouldn't surprise when they first contacted us, but.
Is this on the south side or the north side?
The north side.
The north side, so on the same side, yes.
Immediately adjacent to that oil field disposal site.
Okay.
That, uh, went into construction earlier this year. It's, you know, opposite the side and further east from, from Anthony.
Okay.
So that'll be coming up, uh, I expect you'll see a plan probably in January for that.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, Harry, we've had surveyors out on 406, surveying that bridge, actually, they've surveyed around both of those bridges, uh, the one that Tech Dot's gonna build.
Yeah, Tech Dot's going to replace one of those bridges, um, I think it's scheduled for 2023, but they have to start their design process.
Yeah.
It takes a while, so that's what that's about.
Yeah, okay. I had talked to those guys a couple of times out there, and they, they were working for Tech Dot, they said.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to agenda item number 14, consider and approve the service agreement between Grimes County and Apres SavNS Maintenance Agreement for fiscal year 2021, and authorize the county judge as signatory, that's our attachment number 14. Okay, there's a lot of excitement in the court in regards to this, but, uh, just to reiterate, the title, it's a first contract renewal participating entity services agreement for the statewide automated victims notification service.
Judge, if there's no question, Al, maybe that we approve the service agreement between Grimes County and Apres.
Thank you.
For fiscal year 2021, and authorize you as the signatory.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 14 by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett, is there further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries, we have already considered, uh, number, I'm sorry, number 15, we need to table that until, till the 21st agenda, uh, as the tax assessor collector has not received the bonds in hand, she advised me this morning, but they are completed, she just doesn't have the paper. Number 16, we're on hold with that with Blue Jay, number 17.
There are a few right here.
Who are they? Blue Jay, do you wanna come back in? So consider and take action to approve a 381 agreement with Blue Jay, as we've said already, we've given you folks a, um, offer, and y'all stepped out to make a call, are you in a position to respond?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, thank you, Judge, um, unfortunately, that number is significantly lower than anything that we have modeled or, or talked about, so I, I can't say, I'm not saying no today, but I'm saying, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to go run some more numbers and see if that's feasible. I mean, is the court open to a counter, to that counter, because we're just gonna have to go run some numbers and see, and if we cannot make that work, you know, and, and I, I expect we can do this in a day or two, so I think we can get back to you soon, but we're just gonna have to go get very serious with the pencil.
Do you wanna be on the 21st agenda? That's next Monday.
Can we put it on the agenda, and then, for some reason, we can always just not do it, right?
We can do that.
Yeah.
If you're not here, we take no action.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great.
Uh, I will tell you upfront, the committee did not have a Plan B.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
So.
Well, and I appreciate that, it's just, that's a, that's a lower number than anything we have looked at.
Sure.
And so we'll, we'll go back and sharpen our pencils and see if there's a way to do it, and we'll come back and let you know.
That's very fair.
Okay.
When you work it out, we'd like to have your business.
Okay, thank you.
Judge, could I ask that the person preparing the agenda put those other items on there, or do you wanna push that back further also?
Um, if you would provide, share the language.
Sure.
I'm glad to put those on there, John.
I'll be happy.
Okay, that way we can keep it moving for these guys, in the event they're able to, uh, work the numbers.
And just so, so I understand, that would be, uh, amending guidelines and criteria for the 381, what were the other two items?
Public hearing, and then there is approval of this paper's specific.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't call us, we'll call you.
Okay.
Just. Inside joke, okay, no joke. All right, I guess we're at, uh, agenda item number 17, discuss and take action on items related to the coronavirus relief fund. Uh, Jesse Murphy, your office has submitted.
Yes.
All of the information, and that was, and was on before the deadline on Tuesday afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
Before you say anything, I just want to applaud your office.
Thank you.
Specifically, Jessica Herrera, who picked up for Mary Johnson, I thought Mary Johnson did a, a great job of collecting data and then turning it over to Ms. Herrera, Ms. Herrera kept me informed, and a little bit nervous, but kept me informed and beat the deadlines, and as far as I know, we're not just waiting on, um, those folks.
We have a few pending items, canceled checks that we're waiting to come in, we did receive confirmation that that's okay, as long as they're uploaded by the end of the month, um, so once those come in, then we'll upload those, but then, yes, the ball's in that court.
Okay, and we're specifically working with TIDAM for the reimbursements on this, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
TIDAM, the Tax Department Emergency Management, for those that might not be familiar with that acronym.
I, I have a, a comment, Jesse, uh, we talked the other day about, uh, St. Mary's turning in that information to try to get reimbursement. On the news yesterday, there was a, uh, deal that, that, uh, Olsteen's Church in Houston got money for PPE and money to pay their employees from the government. I'm wondering why, if they gave it to them, why, you know, our churches couldn't get that.
Did it go through the county over there, or did it go directly to the church, was it some type directly to the church? Because this was directly to the county, and then, I can look into that for you, but I think that you would need a little more information on how they received it, where they received it from, and if it was the same as what we received, but I did speak to, um, myself with the church, and told them, from what it looks like, they may be giving more money for funding for this, um, and so just to hang on to it, because if that does come down, then we'll be in contact with them.
I just wanted us to follow up on that, you know, since I heard that, and find out where that, where that came from.
But Commissioner, I will tell you, the restrictions that they put on the rural counties are far more significant than what they did with the suburban counties like Harrison, Bear, and Dallas and Tarrant, uh, and also the municipalities.
Yes.
So both of those areas got funding, and it was kind of, here you are.
Do what you want with it, yeah.
So, we had far more restrictions, but it's a fair question that you asked. So you'll provide, are you doing the research on that, Ms. Murphy?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we'll go to agenda item number 18, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory. I would propose no action at this time, since we have had moisture and more moisture's on the way, but with the frost that we've had and everything is dead, we, we need to pay particular attention to it, so. Is there an agreement to take no action?
Yes.
All right. Any updates on the strategic plan? Did you?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll go to agenda item number 20, is there a motion to adjourn?
I believe we adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion before the court, agenda item 20 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett, further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.